Please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Faugie-Tur.
Here.
Mr. Hurley.
Here.
Mr. Jurich. Mr. Coniker. Mr. Lesby.
Here.
Ms. Metzler.
Here.
Mr. Norris. Ms. Perkett. Mr. Zimmerman. Five present, zero, uh, four absent.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to the next item. Approval of the minutes of the Facility Committee meeting, reorganization meeting, and the work session of December second, twenty twenty-four, and the Policy Committee meeting, the Finance Committee meeting, and the regular meeting of December ninth, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, uh, visitors' comments for agenda items only. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Presentations. Turn it over to Dr. Lever.
Okay, we have two fantastic student groups here tonight. Um, one that is going to talk about a courtyard project that has been their inspiration. This is, and I'm, I'm, I'm sure they'll tell you some more, um, about it, but this is a, a project that has been kind of generated by students and we have started to action this. And so, actually, I have your, I have your poster up here, um, so I'll pull that out. And, uh, if you guys want to come down, I don't know how you want to, I don't know, looks like you all maybe have a speaking part? Yeah? You can just stand, you don't have to sit, uh, just come down, sit, and then whoever's speaking maybe, maybe, uh, hit the button and get the red green light to come on and then speak into the microphone so that whosever's online. So this is the placard. This is the inspiration for what they're looking to do, and it is the courtyard that is immediately right out there. And when I got here, it was, um, quite frankly, it was a lot of weeds, and the first thing I said was, we need to, we need to fertilize that. And then I found out that we actually have a plan, so I'm going to bring this over to the gym.
Good evening, my name's Alexa.
My name's Sarah.
My name's Carrie.
My name's Sinead.
My name's King.
My name's Love.
My name's Darlene.
And we are with the Octavera Leo Club to present our courtyard project, and we would like to thank you guys for having us here today. Leo Club is a service organization that focuses on community service and fulfilling the needs of our school and community. Leo Club is student-led and student-based, but we also work along the side of the Parksburg Lions, Lions Club. Some of our community service events include food drives, roadside cleanups, community gardening, and involving ourselves in various school activities such as family fun night and helping at track meets.
So with this presentation, we split it up into three parts, the past, the present, and the future. So what began this all was around six years ago, former Octavera students Bianca Cortez, Wyatt Umbel, and Brock Young formed the original seed of the courtyard project. As seen in pictures, you can see the original, um, way they promoted through the student body at that time and their original presentation. So as these students formed this idea, they came together with the engineering program at the time, which created a rough CAD project, which then they presented to the district. And then, the district then worked together with their contracted landscape and architecture to come up with the final layout. As you can see here and over here, uh, this is what the full project will look like, hopefully in the end, as we complete it. And we broke it down into three phases. Phase one is the amphitheater and the beginning of concrete work in the sidewalks. As you can see, which you'll see a little bit later, um, the amphitheater is already put into the courtyard. Phase two will include the agricultural aspects with planting trees, meadows, and other gardening, which will attract bad luck. And phase three is the miscellaneous items, including discussionary, discussion areas, birdhouse, lounge areas, and other areas to gather students to learn and the outside.
All right, now I'll be showing you the present part of it. So the court not, courtyard on the left side, it, this was before anything was done to it, and it was pretty bare. And currently, we added the outdoor classroom, and that's a really nice thing, so in like the springtime, we can just go outside and learn outside in the fresh air, and it's a nice change of scenery. And we also added the trees and the bushes, and that got like birds to come in, and that's really nice, but without those trees, there's no birds in it.
Here's what we plan to do in the future with the courtyard. As Carrie mentioned before, we have three phases, the concrete and paving and amphitheater, tree planting, and extra materials. Shown on the slide is an estimated total, which has split up the cost into three sections. Currently, we are in phase one, the hardscaping. We have already built the amphitheater using the money Leo Club has raised in the past years from fundraisers. We plan to continue to use this money to further the sidewalk construction process. Phase two will consist of landscaping, where we will plant more trees, flowers, and gardens. Our blueprint also includes a meadow. Phase three will be the final touches, to make the environment more comfortable for students and wildlife.
Uh, s- so, in order to raise, uh, funds, and like, we have future fundraisers in place, for example, uh, car washes, bake sales, and raffles, and these funds, these fundraisers will help us earn more money that will go towards funding our project.
We are very excited for this project to come to life. Thank you for your time and supporting the Octavera Leo Club.
So this was six, six years ago?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Repone, do you want to, you want to help us out with how have you been able to keep this alive?
Um, persistence.
Mm-hmm.
Right? That's been our, just consistent, our club has changed faces over time.
Yeah.
But they're just committed to seeing this through because it's such a good idea.
Yeah.
Everybody really latched onto the idea and really liked the idea and wants it to continue, so the Leo Club is persistent.
Yes. Does anybody from the board have any questions or comments, or, or any of the administrators who are here?
I, I do just want to add, uh, Mrs. Repone is being very good about this, but she was the persistence in the Leo Club, and a lot of the credit needs to go to her, and obviously the students for, for the work that they've, they've put into this project. But I remember beginning this project six years ago, I remember when we, we had meetings to talk about this, and, and I was excited about it, and, uh, I'm, I'm so glad that we're finally seeing this project come to fruition, and, uh, if anyone gets a chance, not so much now in this current weather, but in the spring, come out and see the amphitheater, I, I recommend, uh, seeing that area, it's, it's beautiful, so, um, I'm really proud of what Ms. Repone and, and our students have done.
You know, our, our mission, the last part of our mission is that we want, we want to see our students making a positive contribution to their community, and six years ago, some students did that. It was, it was just a vision, it was just an idea, but you guys are getting to see it actually come to fruition. For the board's edification, this, uh, this, this kind of got spearheaded because we had some extra block that when we did our Arcetera project, they ordered way too much block, and they tried to sell it to us at a very hefty price. But Mr. Domowitz convinced them that what they really wanted to do was give our students a tremendous break on those blocks, and they did, and that was, uh, kind of, kind of the beginning. We had some materials that were here on site, and, uh, and Mr. Domowitz helped to, uh, get a favorable rate, and we've been able to move forward, and it'll be really, really cool to see every year as more of this goes forward. So congratulations, guys, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I'll say thank you for coming, I really appreciate hearing from you and your work that you've done on this of creating a beautiful space, I love the idea of you being able to use the outside spaces, so, um, was there some comment about grant money being able to be used for some of the trees and pollinators, is that on the table?
We, um, we will, we are not beneath asking just about anybody to support this. Um, we have, we've had people express interest, and I, I would imagine the Leo Club would go along with this, we've expressed, uh, people expressed, have expressed interest in putting trees in memorial for people who've passed away, and this would be a great avenue for that. We actually have a, a Boy Scout troop, um, who has volunteered their time, if we get said trees, that they would come in and be happy to put them in, so, um, you just never know, once people know what we're doing and that students are, are the ones that are driving it, it tends to go a lot faster than if us adults do it, so, thank you, guys.
Would it, would it be possible to, um, utilize the sign to advertise some of this work that they're projecting?
Oh, absolutely, uh, the sign here or the one on thirty?
The one on thirty.
Yeah, absolutely, I don't know if you guys have been featured there, but we'll get Mr. Patika to take your picture and, uh, put a, you guys don't mind being out on Route Thirty, right? Yes, that would be an excellent way to, like, spread the word. There is, the, the Education Foundation has purchased, uh, a billboard where we, where we spotlight what our students do, so, soon, soon coming to that billboard, I think it's probably you guys.
You're up in lights, it's coming soon.
Dr. Lever, can you send me that?
The presentation?
The presentation?
Yeah, we can, if, uh, if you can send me the presentation, we'll make a PDF available to everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah. May, may, maybe you can talk to some of your police force people, and maybe they want to donate a tree. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then, we have some representatives from, uh, our, our ag mechanics class, I, how many of you voted in this? Look at that, look at that. We all needed to vote, like, we lived in Philadelphia multiple times, um, that's, that's my old Philadelphia principal used to joke about that because she was from Philadelphia, voted early and often, yeah. So we, we, this is one case where we could have voted in early and often for the tractor restoration, uh, I think, was it Northern Lebanon was a little more organized than us? So they sent their blast to cousins and aunts and uncles. And, and, and sniped it at the very end, um, so, uh, they, I asked them to come because Mr. Patika was up in the, at the farm show when they did their presentation, and his words to me were, these kids were so articulate, I couldn't believe it. I, I didn't know, he actually said, I didn't know some of them would speak, and not only did, did they speak, they spoke very well. So I wanted, uh, Mr. King to kind of tell us about their project and, uh, take us through their presentation.
Sure, sure. So at the farm show, uh, the last number of years, there had been a ag mechanics competition for schools around the state to participate in. Uh, for a number of years, it was a restoration of a bigger tractor, and, uh, two years ago it was a log splitter, and I remember there was a, a video contest for that, I think Octavera actually won that, that contest. Uh, last year it was a big tractor as well, and then this year it was a, a lawn tractor. And so, the team here, and Grant will talk about and introduce the, the team members, uh, their job was to restore a tractor that was nineteen eighty-five or older, and, uh, they had to do a video, they had to do a presentation, um, and do all the work for the, for the tractor there. So this presentation that you're going to see here is what they gave a couple of Saturdays ago up at the farm show. So there you go. I think that might be the clicker. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yep. Okay. All right, so, thank you, guys, um, we are part of the Octavera FFA chapter, I'm Grant Umbel, uh, this is Gabe, Gabriel Kreider, Garrett Beiler, Lisandro Escobedo Lopez, and Matthew Russell. We also should give thanks to our supervisor, uh, Mr. King, he helped us a lot along the way on this, uh, project. So some inspiration for our project, um, last year, at the twenty twenty-four, um, winter farm show, um, we actually presented, the same team presented a Ford eight N tractor, um, that we had completed the fall before that. Um, we were confident that we could do it again, um, and this year it was a little bit, I don't know if we should say easier, but it was a smaller lawn tractor that we felt, uh, we were competent in completing. And my grandpa actually was able to, uh, give us a nineteen sixty-eight Cub Cadet, um, that we thought would be a great starting point for our project, so we kind of brought it in and hit the ground running at the beginning of the school year.
So, at the start of our project, we did, got it, we did initial inspection and cleaning and power wash, so it's easier to work with, and we obviously inspected for new parts, we needed new tires, uh, new belts, paint, prime, primer, and a couple of other things. So, yeah, we took it all apart, all the pieces apart, engine, everything, and sanded it down, and bonded it, painted, painted it, and granted that, that took some time, yeah.
So problems along the way, um, some, the main issue we had was our tractor did not run at all, so we had to figure out what was wrong, so we disassembled the tractor like Garrett said fully, we took me and Gabe, um, worked on the engine, we took apart the engine, we checked everything, crankcase was not, um, cracked, um, pistons were well, everything was well, but we did not have any compression, so we started a troubleshoot and started eliminating things that we thought were the issue, and we ended up with the valves were our issue, so we removed them, we cleaned them, and then we reinstalled them. After installing them, we figured out our valves were just not good at all, so we ended up replacing those with a parts tractor that we had received from Mr. King, and after that, we were able to get our compression and have our engine running for our tractor.
Um, another problem that we encountered along the way was when our tractor came into the shop, um, as you could see in some of the pictures, it had Cub Cadet one hundred badges on it, um, so that was actually misbadged with stickers from a previous owner. Um, we were able to figure that out, um, with pulling the serial number off of our tractor, and the chart up on the presentation is actually a chart that shows, or matches the serial numbers to the year that the tractor was produced. Um, from there, knowing the year, we were able to use the engine model, which is a, um, seven N, uh, seven point one horsepower Kohler engine, to be able to find the exact model of our tractor.
And, uh, wiring was a pretty big part of the restoration because at the beginning of the project, upon inspection, the wiring harness was in terrible condition, a lot of wires were, were cut, we tested for continuity, and, uh, we're getting no continuity in the, uh, spots that we tested for it. So we made a decision as a team to just buy a new wiring harness, it was pretty simple and easy to look up, that came with a diagram, and, um, when it was all installed, we had, uh, a couple weird issues, and we found out that the, uh, voltage regulator was the problem, and the tractor that Mr. King donated to the shop was a Cub Cadet seventy-two that had a, um, voltage regulator on it, and, uh, we took it off of that and put it on our tractor, and it was the right one, it was plug and play, and after that, the, um, wiring was all good, it all worked, and, uh, that was it for the wiring. And, uh, the assembly started after paint, besides for mounting the tires, which was actually one of the first things that we did, but everything else was after paint, like steering and steering components, installing engine, clutch and gearbox onto the frame, welding on the body panels, which was pretty easy, installing new wiring harness, which I talked about previously, uh, putting decals and badges on and connecting the mower deck and the belts. And this was the finished product right here after, um, a lot of hard work and teamwork and planning.
And, uh, skills, uh, we learned and, uh, applied along the way, or, uh, troubleshooting, as, uh, we talked about, you know, with, uh, me and Lisandro figuring out about the, uh, compression issues, uh, Grant figuring out about the, uh, misbadge issues, and, um, uh, Matthew figuring out about the wiring harness and stuff like that, and, uh, working as a team, dividing and conquering, you know, me and Lisandro with the engine, Grant and Garrett with the, uh, paint, and, uh, Matthew with the, uh, mower deck and the, um, wiring harness, and, uh, also like special tools that we had to use, like the multimeter for us to check for the continuity, um, a torque wrench, uh, for our head bolts and things that we had to torque down for the, uh, certain specs, for our, um, operator's manual, which, uh, showed us the correct torque pattern, and, yeah, and also, uh, budgeting for our tractor to like, you know, search different websites to, uh, make sure that we're not spending too much and not too little on a, a good part that we, uh, found on different websites.
So, uh, we also, at our presentation, thanked our sponsors, um, the Lancaster Farming, uh, newspaper sponsored us, um, they give like a bonus to all teams that participate in their event, um, the Friends of the Pennsylvania Farm Show, so I think they all put in a little money that goes to all the teams that participate, and then the farm show also gives an incentive for all teams that bring a tractor, a restored tractor, to, uh, to present. So, yeah, that's about it.
Wow. So, so how many teams were there?
There were, there were six in total, but one dropped out, so at the farm show there were five.
So only five entries from across the whole state?
Yeah.
Wow. How many hours do you estimate? Have you added up how many hours you have in this project?
Man. Was it close to two hundred? I think it was close to two hundred hours.
Is that right?
Yeah.
So in other words, I can't afford this tractor. And, uh, would you do it again?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah. Bigger tractor?
Yeah. Yeah, we've done it before, and it was fun, too.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Did the tractor go back to Grandpa Velpel, or is it for sale, what do you do with the tractor?
No, I think it's probably going to come live with me after this.
Isn't it, isn't, isn't Mr. Patika trying to put it on display in the lobby?
It'll be on display tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow, yeah.
Okay, so, stop in on your way to an athletics, uh, contest and get your picture on the Cub Cadet, or maybe it's going to be walled off, no touching.
Think it might be, yeah.
Well, uh, Mr. King, anything to add about your guys?
They did a great job, they represented Octavera well, uh, couldn't ask for a better team.
Yeah. Well, I would encourage any board member to, uh, on any, any given day, to come and visit and go down and see that shop, it's always an active place, and there's a lot of really interesting things that are going, and, you know, uh, I heard the Secretary of Agriculture say that they need one thousand ag mechanics in Pennsylvania. They just can't, they, 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 there's no place that's really training them, and so it's, it's one of the programs in our CTE program that is really, has a direct connection to the workforce, and so, uh, I love the stuff that you guys are learning, and Mr. King, thank you for what you're bringing to Octavera, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, both groups, great presentations.
Thank you so much.
Uh, moving on to, uh, information items, uh, following up on our roll call here this evening, uh, since we only have five members, there is, uh, one item on the agenda, that is item R, and I will read it here so everyone's aware, that the Octavera Board of School Directors approved the bond purchase agreement with Raymond James and Associates, Inc., for seventeen million, five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of capital projects. Per board policy, we need, uh, two-thirds to approve that, and we don't have six here tonight, so that item will be pulled from the agenda, just so everyone's aware of that. Anything to add? Yes, and, uh, we're going to check on availability, uh, of all the other board members to, uh, possibly pull together a special meeting, which will be advertised, uh, as required, uh, because we do want to move on this project, and, and there is some timeliness, uh, a timely factor, uh, to get Raymond James moving on that and advertising it, so, more to come on that. Moving on to the treasurer's report, um, A, that the Octavera Board of School Directors approved the general fund report for period ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Business managers report that the Octavera Board of School Directors approved the list of bills for payment, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Yeah, we asked the Octavera Board of Directors to approve a list of bills for payment for a total of two million, two hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to recommended action items, uh, last week, we covered items A through J, and we're, there were some changes to item K, so I'm just going to read that whole thing again, but it, we need a motion to accept items A through J. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Okay, passes, A through J. K, that the Octavera Board of School Directors approved the following supplemental contracts for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year pending completion of employee-related documents required by law and the district. Jason Ralston, varsity assistant boys' basketball coach, nine points at six hundred and twenty dollars each, for a total of five thousand, five hundred and eighty. Philip Woodward, junior high assistant boys' basketball coach, four points, six hundred and twenty each, two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Eric McCutcheon, varsity assistant girls' basketball coach, nine points at six hundred and twenty dollars each, for a total of five thousand, five hundred and eighty. George Constantineau, junior high assistant boys' wrestling coach, four points at six hundred and twenty dollars each, two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars total. Allison Hickey, head winter cheer coach, seven points at six hundred and twenty dollars each, for a total of four thousand, three hundred and forty. Celeste Myers, assistant junior high girls' basketball coach, four points at six hundred and twenty dollars each, for a total of two thousand, four hundred and eighty. Dominic Lebrano, varsity head base, baseball coach, seven points at six hundred and twenty dollars each, for a total of four thousand, three hundred and forty. Need a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. L, that the Octavera Board of School Directors approved the following athletic workers for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, Teresa Ruddick, Tessa Harkins, who's a student. Need a motion? Need a motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. M, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approved the following intramural supplementals effective November fifteen, twenty twenty-four, pending completion of employee-related documents required by law and the district. Jude Unitas, high school intramural fitness coordinator, three thousand dollars prorated. Brandon Gregor, middle school instructional fitness coordinator, three thousand dollars prorated. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just was curious how, if there's any of the like responsibilities and what this looks like that could be made public. I know it went through before and I didn't ask then. And I was thinking maybe now with approving these two new people, what this looks like, like who it's available to and when. If there's a way that we could put that out there, if it's a new thing or if it's not new, just to kind of clear that up for everybody to know what we're putting this towards, like who it's open to, that would help.
So we have a supplemental contract that's part of our negotiated contract. And so these positions are, are part of that supplemental that has been, that has been negotiated by the union. And last year was the first time, we, we don't have a, we don't have a, which many districts do, where they have somebody who oversees their fitness center. It's like a coaching position each season. And sometimes it's the same person all year long. Sometimes it's, you know, they rotate through. But the idea is to be able to train teams that come through or to be able to allow the fitness center to be used by students after school. We're not, we're just at the beginning of that. And what Mr. Fantasi, he approached the association about the idea of using, we, we had an intramural coordinator that was designed initially to create after-school opportunities for students. And that has just never come to fruition. It, it just never. So they, what they did was they said, well, let's, let's open the fitness center to our students and make sure that, that students have access to the fitness center. And it also follows athletes because if a coach, for instance, coach of whatever team and whatever season, maybe doesn't work for the district. And, but they can arrange with the, the, the person, this intramural person to have athletes come to the, so there's a, there's a time that the, that the fitness center is open. So when we have positions like this, typically they get posted on our website, but we will always give deference to our internal because it just increases our communication. So it's designed to give students an opportunity to be able to use the fitness center. It's designed as a, as a wellness, a wellness, a part of our wellness program. We want kids to become lifelong learners around fitness. And so we have, we have two people who have been willing to take this position, and those are the ones that are being approved tonight.
That's fantastic. Thank you. I think it's wonderful. I'm excited for that opportunity. So, I mean, parents could maybe just check in with their child about the school G schedule? Would that be where, like, the hours would be to know which days are, is for which sports or which days are open for all students?
I think they're, it's just open.
Okay.
Mr. Mr. Dr. Propper, do you, do you know more about this than I do?
And then is there a waiver and how they, they get that waiver filled out?
I, I don't know that information, but easily get that from Mr. Fantasi and I'll report it out. I'll, I'll put it on school G two, just to, for informational for the kids. But we can put something out to that. You know what? I'll include it in my, in my, my parent communication, too.
That is fantastic. Thank you so much.
Do they have, I guess they have some sort of training on how to use the equipment and how to help the students use it safely, et cetera?
They're not trainers. They're not trainers. They're really, both of these are coaches for us. They coach in our programs and they coach in programs that use the weight room. That doesn't make them experts in CrossFit. You know, they could probably show people how to do powerlifting. They're there to make sure kids don't get hurt. I would like to see us move forward with something more formal where we do have, I'd like to see us stipend each, each season where we have somebody who is there for the design purpose of training our athletes. And anybody who wants to do this, this is more of a, this is more of a, they're attending it. They're making sure people aren't getting hurt. They, they know lifts. They know where kids are, are doing things that, that might hurt them. But I'd like to see us go a little bit further with this, a little more formal in the future. So we, but we'd have to do an MOU with the association to come up with. There's, there's some discussion about some other positions as well.
Good discussion. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. N, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve Ms. Radaya Hardeman as a volunteer girls' basketball coach at the Okterra High School. Need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. O, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve the change of Ms. Rebecca German, CTE Director-Secretary, from a ten-month employee to a twelve-month employee effective January twenty-two, twenty twenty-five. Ms. German's salary will be thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty cents prorated. Need a motion? Any discussion? I, I have a question. What, what necessitates the move?
Yeah. So the, the director in the CTE program, the secretary to the director in the CTE program was a new position that was approved right about the time I arrived. It was approved as a ten-month position. Ten-month positions tend to be problematic for us. We have just a couple of them and we're trying to work our way out of those. This one has a really good rationale because of what we've seen as a fairly significant uptick in what, what's happening as that program continues to grow. So we hired a grant writer last year and she is, she is busy working to procure all kinds of additional funds for our CTE program. One of the problems we ran into last year was we had the funds, but we didn't have the ability to execute the funds in time for our students to benefit from them. And so there's a number of things that we need to happen during the summer. And it, it has to do with procurement of a lot of the things that take place in the program. And those funds don't become available until July first. And so we have the end of June to kind of close out the year. There's a lot of reporting around these grants that she works with our grant writer. There's procurement that happens then in the month of July so that we can have things in place for when students start. We just, an example, we just received an eighty-five thousand dollar grant that we are using for the air apparatus in our, in our fire rescue program. We, we needed thirty of those. We bought seven last year. I think we're able to get nine with eighty-five thousand dollars. But there's a, that's, that's one example of, of the secretary follows through with those types of things during the summer. We also have a very, for anybody who knows Mr. Patika, we have a very active CTE director who spends a lot of time procuring new opportunities for students. And our vision for him is that he will meet with as many people as he can in the summer to create these opportunities. And part of that is that, that Rebecca keeps things running in the office so that he can, he can continue to, to kind of drill into those opportunities. So she's, she's marvelously effective. We don't do it because she's effective. We do it because she's effective and our kids are benefiting because of the work that they're doing in generating more, more grant applications and awards. And so ultimately, it comes down to her being able to execute all of that work very quickly once the funding comes through in July.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. P, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve Ms. Maduri Sakrudar, I hope I said that correctly, as an autistic support teacher at the Okterra High School, the effective date to be determined, pending completion of employee-related documents required by law and the district. Ms. Sakrudar's salary will be fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars prorated, which is step seventeen to max of the bachelor's scale. Need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Q, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve the following auditorium student workers at a rate of twelve fifty per hour, twelve dollars and fifty cents per hour. Kelsey Badman, Isabella Nelson. Need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. As noted earlier, we're gonna pull item R from this evening's agenda. S, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve the resolution applying for DCED's Solar for Schools Grant Program for Equipment Included in the Solar Array. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Quick question. Since we're pulling out R, we're gonna approve two grants to write something we haven't put in mind.
These are separate than that. So this is, what these are is, maybe I'll, maybe I'll write you an update this year, this week, rather. It's a, it looks like a sunflower. And it, it's connected directly to a classroom. And so that, so that it's, I mean, this one is tied specifically to what happens in a classroom. It's, it's, it's alongside of solar. But the state has, to this point, has not approved us asking for the Solar for Schools Grant for our larger solar array. But they will allow us to apply for this, which would cover the vast majority of the cost. Yeah. So it's in addition to our array. And these would actually be a little more, they're, they're much more something to behold.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. T, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve the resolution applying for DCED's Solar for Schools Grant Program for the smart flower equipment and installation. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. U, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve the EQ blower replacement at the wastewater treatment plant from M and B Environmental at a cost of two thousand, six hundred and two dollars and eighty cents. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion?
It was, it wa, I believe it has been. I do not believe it has fixed our problem. But I could be confusing two other problems.
All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. V, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve the proposal with Quantum Environmental Enterprise for service and cleaning of the EQ tank at the wastewater treatment plant at a cost of seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. W, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve the replacement of the basketball backward, backboards from Degler Whiteley, Inc. at the Okterra High School at a total cost of thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars, including equipment and installation. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Well, I, I for one hate to see them go, but I understand the need. Yeah, understand the need, but those things have been here as long as I've been coming to this school. And I hate to see them go. Hopefully, we can keep them and put them up somewhere.
Well, I'm, I'm not afraid to let people know that our coach is doing everything that he can to try to find somebody to create the padding and that, that we need. He holds out hope. And then I also understand that our, there could be some issues with hanging the new ones on what we have existing. So, yeah, home court advantage, right, Ms. Metzler? Yeah, our, our coach is, is willing to go along, but he is trying everything he can to preserve a little more time in our existing state.
All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. X, that the Okterra Board of School Directors accept with regret the resignation for purpose of retirement of Ms. Carol Johnson as an instructional assistant at the Okterra Elementary School effective June sixth, twenty twenty-five. Need a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Y, that the Okterra Board of School Directors accept with regret the resignation for purpose of retirement of Ms. Christine Robinson as dental hygienist effective June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Well, I have to just admit, I did not know we had a dental hygienist. And if you could take this opportunity to educate me about scope and scale of that, I'd appreciate it.
That's a great question. Yes, Christine Robinson has been with us a long time. She is only with us, I think it's three days a week. She's in, I would say most of what she does now is education, where there used to be a time when they were doing more with, with Dennis. I would say a lot of it now has been education. It's a contracted position and so we are, she's a, she's a really, she's a really pleasant person and we will, we will miss her. She's very energetic, flexible. And so most of it was education that our kids needed. And so we will be evaluating kind of what are our needs and is there something, is there something more than this? Is there, is there some hybrid? But we certainly have not seen fewer kids in our district who need, you know, services that, that can be provided. So, but it's, it's a position we'll evaluate in her absence as she goes.
Dr. Lever, would it be appropriate for me to add something?
Absolutely.
So another feature of our dental hygienist is that she arranges monthly trips to a dental clinic called CVIM, which is in Westchester, right near, I believe it's Ice Line, Ice Rank, if you're familiar. But it's organized for students who either don't have insurance or who are underinsured or cannot access dental care. And they can go for cleanings, for checkups, or to have actual dental maintenance done. So students who maybe have an abscess or cavity or need greater services, she arranges that on a monthly basis. And just a, a backup thank you as we're talking about backboards. Jean Lambert, for the longest time, was assisting and driving her and the students to this treatment. And because it became so busy, we've actually asked Alt House in the past two years to assist with transporting students. And we make sure that Chris Robinson also goes along to these appointments so the students have a friendly face to support them going in and coming out of the treatment. So it's been a pretty special program for our students. And, you know, I say we share her with Avengrave School District. They contract her separately for the days that we don't have her. But that is a requirement of school code that there's dental services available either as an employee here or that we would contract another agency to deliver those. So education and services.
Thank you so much. I'm glad to learn all that. I appreciate it.
Good discussion. Thank you. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Z, that the Okterra Board of School Directors accept with regret the resignation for purpose of retirement of Dr. Christian Howler as principal of the Okterra Intermediate School effective October twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. Need a motion? Any discussion? I'll jump in. Certainly, Dr. Howler's been here a very long time. Appreciate his service to the district. Sad to see him go.
Yes, he, he has, he has a number of, of skills that we still wanna utilize. He is, of all of our principals, he might be the best with data and the reporting and all of the tools that we're using to analyze where we are. all of the tools that we're using to analyze where we are, and so we look forward to him bringing, bringing his expertise to us in these, in these, this last, I don't know, half year, six months, eight months, whatever it is. But yes, he will be missed, and we look forward to the work that he's still going to do between now and October twenty fifth, which would be his birthday, so.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Policy Committee Report, turn it over to Ms. Metzler.
Thank you. We met here in this room at six o'clock tonight. We began with Policy zero zero five, which is about board organization. That was mostly just wording changes that came to us at this time from P S B A regarding how to remove a board member. Also, an update in the language around the board bringing in consultants, mostly like limiting the scope of their authority in making any changes in their role as just consultants. Policy three oh eight, Employment Contract and Board Resolution. It added a definition for the delegation of responsibilities, and currently, we've been accepting resignations via email. We don't see a need to change that. Is that how we said that? We did agree to keep out a change where, I need to like pull this paper up, sorry. We agreed to change-
Accepting, the superintendent would be, would have been given the authority to accept the resignation as opposed to the vote by the board, and I think we all felt it probably is a better due process for the employee if it goes to the board, not just be held by the superintendent.
Yes, we'll keep it the way it is, so we could strike P S B A changes from it and keep, keep our current policy where it will continue to come before the board to accept the resignations. And then finally, Policy eight twenty three, mostly broadening the wording beyond just naloxone as an opioid antagonist, but just kind of changing the wording throughout to broaden that up. We, one thing to note, we had a little discussion about Policy seven oh seven, which is the use of school facilities and the facility use fee schedule. We agreed to revisit that at our policy meeting next month, so if there's people who have questions or would like to be part of the discussion for that, please note that we'll add that to our discussion for Policy Committee next month, and I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Finance Committee Report. Mr. Losby.
The Finance Committee met earlier tonight in this room. We reviewed the December twenty twenty four results. We also had a presentation from Raymond James around the debt service proposal that we tabled due to lack of board members here this evening for various reasons. And so, so, and then we did a high-level budget update for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget with priorities focused around optimizing staffing levels, study cost per pupil factors, control benefit costs, review contracts, professional services, leverage technology, continue to study efficiencies, and stem the tide of charter drain. So there was a lot of good information that we went over in that, and that was what I had.
Thank you very much. Our C C I U board rep is Mr. Norris. He's not here tonight, so we'll give him something more to do at the next meeting, and he can give us his report then. Old business? I don't think there's any. New business? Anyone? Other items and announcements? No? Okay, we'll move on to visitors' comments in general. Please state your name and municipality.
Good evening. Brandon Umble from Highland Township. I just have two quick comments. One, just because of the recent weather events, I just wanted to say, there seems to be a misconception sometimes with what roads are township roads and what are PennDOT roads. So I know there's been a lot of stuff floating around social media, but I will go to bat for some of the Highland Township guys, that they do an excellent job with a lot of our secondary roads, sometimes better than PennDOT, and I'll go on record saying that. Second thing, Grant is our son, that was part of the Ag Mechanics competition, and I just wanted to make it known from a parent's viewpoint, we are extremely happy with Mr. King's presence. He's just been a blessing and a gift, and a really solid guy who seems to really care about kids, and we've seen the effects of that already just in a year or so that he's been here. So just to make that known for board members, you got a really good guy, and very good with what he does. He knows, he knows his job well, and keeps the kids' attention well, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I, and thank you for the opportunity. I also would like to respond, because in a conversation with one parent, I mentioned that Highland Township Road was not, was not plowed, and I believe they were responsible, but they're not responsible, and they, they deserve an apology from the superintendent because they, they had nothing to do with the fact that the road was not plowed. I've, I've now figured out where that is. I have a meeting with a state representative this week, because he helped, he helped to kind of smooth that with PennDOT not understanding, or whoever it is that's in charge, that the road is at the very far reaches of their, of what they need to do, and, I mean, I'd love to talk to some landowners. I, I would invest in some snow fence, the old-fashioned kind with wire and sticks, because I think that could really help keep us, it would be worth, if the, if the landowners would agree to that, it would be worth probably the district's investment in putting that up, because that road is notoriously bad. But it is not Highland Township that is responsible for that part, and I apologize for that. I still don't know exactly who it is, but when I speak with Representative Lawrence this week, I'll learn a little bit more about, about who we can call, because we want to make sure that we can keep our kids in school as much as possible, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And as someone who does live on the Highland Township Road, I know my road was plowed, and appreciate that. Seeing no other visitors' comments, we will move on to Administrator comments or announcements.
Just briefly, I just want to say thank you again to Mr. King. I concur with the Umbles about Mr. King being solid, it's a real win for Actraera and our C T programs. I also want to say thank you to Marsha Arpon and the Leo Club. Obviously, you see the work that has gone into the projects, so really proud of them, but just another example of how our school is committed to the mission and vision of this district, and what we're trying to get our students to do, so excited for that. I also just wanted to briefly mention, I didn't say anything last week when, when this, this came out, but I did want to say, I usually save these for the end of the year, but it's appropriate to just thank Phil Rudisil for his years of service to the school district. I know, I think Dr. Lever said something last week, but Phil is one of the nicest men you could meet, and he, he very much cares about, cares about students. He's been a coach as well. We're going to miss him dearly, but I'm, I'm excited for, for him to enjoy retirement and do things that he wants to do with his life, so I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Rudisil for, for his service. And I just wanted to send a message for Mr. Patika, of course, because he was kind of bummed that he wasn't here for the presentation tonight, but he was at Dying Town East, doing more work, trying to promote our programs, and just as I had mentioned, the tractor that, that our, our good students put together will be on display in our main lobby of the high school tomorrow, right up against the wall, we'll have it cordoned off, but just a, it'll be a nice little showpiece for our students, so I just want to invite you, if you happen to, to visit, say for maybe a basketball game or something, just come, come out and see the tractor. Thank you very much.
You might want to remove the battery. We don't need any senior pranks of joyriding on the tractor.
Well, there will be no fuel in the tank, I can assure you. Okay, that's, that's flammable, we know that's a problem, so it was all out, and they're going to push it in the hallway to its present location, so.
I just want to add to what Dr. Propper was saying about our students. Seeing our students tonight proves that students can and do make a difference in the world. They are just amazing. I also want to thank the students that are taking care of the baby goats, which visited our principal's meeting and brought joy to everyone. It's just really a blessing to have those programs and have all our students here. And I'm going to do a shameless plug for Education Committee. Next Monday night, six P M. in the hub, we are featuring a presentation from E S S Mental Health Support Services. Student Services will be presenting an update on our new guidance plan, Chapter three thirty-nine Plan. Dr. Propper will be giving an update on the portrait of a graduate, and I think tonight with our students, we saw what a portrait of a graduate is, so we're just going to formalize that. Dr. Schultz will be giving us an update on grades one through five math pilots, and a very special presentation from our science teachers in middle school for our SEAL standards and Open Sai Ed resource. So we hope to see everyone there.
One more plug to see the tractor, but by way of a Unified Bocce Meet tomorrow in the high school gymnasium, starting at three o'clock. I'm going to do my best to be there as well. I'm coming from the intermediate unit, so please, no, no sneers or jeers if you don't see me right away, or only for a portion. I'm really excited, the, the last home meet was a huge success, the kids did wonderful, and as you heard people speak at last week's work session, it, it's absolutely becoming something electric amongst our school community, our student community. The student body are really excited, and for the past week and a half, I think that's all that we've been hearing, is how excited students are to go and see it in action again, so if you need one more excuse or reason to find your way to the tractor that the students did a fantastic job on, please, please visit our student athletes at Unified Bocce.
There's a superintendent requesting permission to support the bocce team wearing the bocce sweatshirt tomorrow?
The principal is, so I can tell you that, just FYI.
Little shameless promotion for our bocce program. Thank you, Kale. Just, just a word about Dr. Howler. You know, being a principal's not an easy job. Being a principal in one place for an extended period of time is, is not an easy job, and, you know, I just want to thank him for his years of service and his kind of steady leadership, in particular since I've been here, and, you know, he, he has many things that he, that he would like to do, and I'm sure that his, his time after serving as a principal at Actraera is probably going to be filled with some golf and things that maybe, maybe lift his spirits, but we, we certainly appreciate his time. I know, I know we probably see, we'll see a couple of other maybe hard retirements. I, I've kind of got some, I see some appointments on my calendar, and I've kind of got a sense of, of what that might be. We're, we put a strategy in place to encourage teachers to tell us earlier, so that we could find ample replacements, and I think that's, that's working, but it means that we, we hear these things very early, and it's, it's difficult to see really, really good people and really effective teachers and who know so much. One of them, I was in her classroom, I read to her classroom last week, Marsha Cassin, and what a, what a, just what a calm classroom. And, and just in and amongst other classrooms, it was, it was just very clear to me that she's very skilled at what she does, and that's, that's the shame of people retiring, because the people, you're losing lots of experience, and we wish them well. You know, we're, we're also excited, we bring in somebody new like Mr. King, and we're, we, we wonder, how did we ever do without him? And so that's always the case, but it doesn't, it doesn't make it any easier to see our, our strong people retiring and leave us, so we're, we're thankful for their time of service. I also want to put a plug for our, for the community, for anybody who's, who's following. We're going to have a town hall meeting. We had to reschedule the one from last week. It will be on the twenty eighth, and then again on February third. Our plan is to stream those, so if you can't make it, or we have bad weather, or you just don't want to come, you want to be able to watch it from home, it'll be streamed, and then that will be archived, and people will be able to see it. We're very interested in questions that would come from the community. This is an exploration, so that the board can have the most amount of information for decisions that we, that we have in front of us coming out of the feasibility study. We, we have a really bright future at Actraera. Part of our, our meeting tonight, in the business meeting, I think, I think board members can, can sense that we have a really good plan for how we could move forward, and how we can do all of the things that we want to do, and, and yet not, not be fiscally irresponsible, that it's a, it's a very responsible plan that doesn't require us to go and do a whole bunch of other things to bring money in. It's, it's using our resources well. And so in this town hall meeting, we want to kind of lay out the plan that we have, and we think it's really, we think it's a good one, and, but we're really interested in what the community thinks. So I would encourage you on the twenty eighth, seven o'clock, or February third, seven o'clock, or you can join us online. Thank you.
Thank you, all of you. Board comments? Any board comments? Just go around.
Just wanted to again thank both groups of students that came out. Thought it was really neat to see all that stuff, especially the, the guys on the Ag. I was reminiscent of the high school jackets back when I was in high school, where they all had the same jackets, and I thought that was really cool.
Yes, I just can't neglect to mention Ms. Cassin's retirement. She, on a personal note, is really special to us as our first teacher for our first child entering Actraera, and I just have to say, she set the tone and set the bar really high for what we could expect and experience since then with our Actraera teachers of just being so warm and welcoming both to the students, meeting them, I mean, on that first grade level, it just takes a really special person to be so genuinely caring for this length of time. Nobody has probably earned retirement more, but she was really welcoming also to us as parents, and even gave spots to come and volunteer and be part of that, and, you know, some of the kids I was able to meet and connections formed with classmates through that were really special, and have honestly created, like, the experience moving forward even past her grade. So just the impact of one teacher is huge, and she was such a great example of that. So huge thank you to her for her time and our personal experience with her. I always love to have the students here, so a big thanks to them and their families and Mr. King. We also are through all of the winter concerts that our family went to, so I just have to give a big shout out to the music department. They put on just some really phenomenal programs, just a really great experience that they're providing for just even like the cultural learning that happens, along with learning the instrument and the relationships created, so many thanks to them as well.
Okay. We will announce the following meetings before adjournment. Policy Finance, Policy and Finance Committees, meetings Tuesday, January twenty one, twenty twenty five, six P M. in the middle school multipurpose room. Executive session?
Yeah, Personnel and Legal.
We will have an executive session for Personnel and Legal, Tuesday, January twenty one, twenty twenty five, after the regular meeting in Room one oh two at the middle school. Education Committee Meeting, Monday, January twenty seven, twenty twenty five, six P M. in the middle school hub. Facility Committee Meeting, Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty five, six P M. in the middle school multipurpose room. Next regularly scheduled work session, Monday, February ten, twenty twenty five, seven P M. in the middle school multipurpose room. Policy and Finance Committee Meetings, Tuesday, February eighteen, twenty twenty five, six P M. in the middle school multipurpose room. Next regularly scheduled board meeting, Tuesday, February eighteen, twenty twenty five, seven P M. in the middle school multipurpose room. And Education Committee Meeting, Monday, February twenty four, twenty twenty five, six P M. in the middle school, it says multipurpose room. Either way, we'll figure out where it is. The hub, okay, the middle school hub. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.